All right, Bennett County Commissioners are in session. We do have one amended item on our agenda today, so if you would make a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. First item on our agenda is invoices, Commissioners' report and credit report. I didn't have anything on this one.
I do have the invoices for Enterprise to pay off the leases. Those totaled to, we knew they were going to come in a little bit higher than what we had in ARPA. We have $200,000 in ARPA. The total came in at $299,931.73. So, these are the ARPA ones. But I was wondering if you would like to use PILT, the money that we had allotted for the jail boiler. That is almost wrapping up. I haven't received the final bills yet, but we should have the remaining $99,856.53 that we could pay from PILT, if that's okay.
Let me ask you a question about that one. PILT, is there any kind of restrictions?
No.
But ARPA, there is.
Yes.
Yes.
So I wondered why it would be better to use PILT than ARPA?
Well, because all the ARPA money's been allotted. And we didn't budget, we had to restructure some of the projects, and we took from the Enterprise lease payoffs to fund some of the other projects in full. And so we knew that was going to leave us a little bit short.
So in this case, it would take us over what we budgeted with the ARPA?
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
Yes, by the 99.
Gotcha.
Plus.
Just $100,000.
Yeah. Now, I did have Luann in my office put together some of the savings that some of the departments are going to have. So we should have some departments that have extra funds, since we're paying these off before the end of the year.
Okay.
That should help them out in some aspect, so.
No, I'm kind of excited to get them paid off.
Me too. They're all flagged right there. And then if you could, he'll just pay up here by the amount, or sign.
Sorry.
And then these are the ones that I wasn't sure, I didn't want to take the initiative to code them to PILT, and you not agree.
Okay.
So these are the PILT ones, if he'll just sign.
Do the same on top.
Yeah. And then I'll, he'll hand those back to me, I will code them.
Okay.
So keep those in their own little pouch, please. This should say this year's budget. I should have had her give me a total. About $60,000 in this year's funds that should remain unspent with payoffs.
Good. Your mark system's a lot like mine.
I was trying to keep it so that you, which pages design.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
So Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the invoices, Commissioners' reports, and kind of applications.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next, we have a salary rate approval form.
Ready for a motion on this one?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the salary rate approval.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the payroll report.
Good with that?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the payroll report.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye. And then we have alcohol licenses.
You understand with that?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the alcohol licenses presented.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye. All right. Looks like you're up. About giving away some money.
Yes. Good morning. My name's Shane Grill. I'm here on behalf of the Bennett County Ambulance. We received a request for waiver of the ambulance standby fee. I believe the Chief, Chief O'Hearn, sent you a copy of the request. The ambulance district has received a request to stand by for the Marsh Valley Pioneer Day rodeo in McCammon. The request is for approximately 14 hours of standby. The breakdown is listed. Total cost is approximately $2380, $2,380. This represents a cost if we were to staff it with off-shift personnel using overtime, as we do for events in North County. The standby fee is $170 an hour. In previous years, as with this year, South County volunteers are planning on staffing this ambulance. They will staff it at the rodeo and maintain staffing for emergency calls as well. So effectively, it will be a no-cost for the county. The ambulance will be, or is still being planned on staff for Inkham, Downey, and Lava, and they have said they're willing to do the same thing this year. From a staff perspective of Fire Department and Ambulance District, we would recommend approving this waiver.
Any questions?
Nope.
Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the waiver as requested.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, you're up.
Ready now? Thank you. I wanted to visit with you this morning. I know that Wes has received.
You can introduce yourself first.
Oh, Tim Solomon, Regional Business Manager, Rocky Mountain Power. Do you want my address?
No.
Okay, all right. We've been out and about talking to folks, and the emergency managers have received a lot of information that I'm giving you today, and so you may hear some repetition on this. But as we're in wildfire season, right smack dab in the middle of that, and we're all concerned about that, what's top of mind for us, of course, is the fires that have occurred all across the country, particularly in California, Oregon, Hawaii. And for utility, those things are critical, critical elements. What utilities are facing is heat blooms that are bigger, faster, inbound. When fires start, they're bigger, they grow faster. We see more fuel on the ground, and we want to avoid igniting any fires as a utility. Safety is critical for us. So we are putting together enhanced safety measures that are going to include things like non-expulsion fuses, for instance, that will blow before a transformer has a chance to spark. We're going underground in some cases, so you may have lines that have typically traditionally been overhead on a particular circuit. And if there's high fire risk on that circuit, we'll take those underground and put those in conduit typically. Even some overhead, we may put a shielded wire on and replace that. Now, what that means, too, is that you'd have to put taller poles in, change out that line a little bit. You may even have to put in different crossarms, things like that, that will create additional infrastructure on that particular circuit. The idea being that we reduce, that we mitigate that fire risk, right? So anytime we see a, say, a rural circuit with a lot of vegetation, a lot of dry vegetation and conditions that make that high-fire consequence area, we're going to take different measures and try to mitigate those. And of course, this takes time. We cover six states, and so a lot of capital investment to try to make sure that these extra safety measures, enhanced safety measures, are taking place. So we're doing that all across the six states. But along with that comes additional responsibility, of course, to protect against wildfires. And I guess there are really two policies I want to talk to you about today. The first is what we call a public safety power shut-off. We're using the same terminology that Idaho Power uses. I think the entire utility industry is doing that. PG and California, I think, probably uses the same terminology. We're sort of all in this boat together. A public safety power shut-off is one we can see coming. So we have a lot of meteorologists, we have a lot of data points running through terabytes of data every day, simulating wildfires on these circuits. And we can see every circuit, exactly how it's performing, according to those environmental conditions. If environmental conditions are reaching a point where there is a chance of a fire, then we're going to start contacting you and your emergency management folks. Now, you'll probably get it two ways. Emergency management will get it from our emergency management folks. You'll hear from me, more than likely, as elected officials, so that I'm stayed in touch and keeping that contact point with you. Now, what does that mean? About 72 hours out, we're going to be contacting you, talking about the risk, talking about the potential for a public safety power shut-off. When we get down to 24 hours approximately, we're going to have to make a decision about that. Are the environmental conditions changing, or are they such that we think we're going to have to turn off a circuit? In other words, open up that breaker back at the substation, turn that circuit off. So within 24 hours of that event, you'll know about it. Your residents will also know about it. Customers will be receiving texts, emails, phone calls about that to notify them. Now, what does that mean if we had to actually conduct a public safety power shut-off? It means that that affected circuit, regardless of where it is, would be turned off until environmental conditions improve to such an extent that we can get it back on. I know it's inconvenient. None of us want this. We hope it doesn't have to happen. But the fact is, I would much rather have you mad at me for turning that circuit off than have a fire start because of our lines. We just don't want to take any risk at all of having a fire. The second policy is one we can't really see coming. Now, let's just say that your fire folks notify us that there's a fire in a location. We're going to immediately go to our mapping systems, and we're going to take a look at that. We'll assess environmental conditions. We'll find out exactly what's going on in that area: humidity, barometric pressure, wind speed, all of that, vegetation, all of that will be part of it. We'll have just a few minutes to assess the environmental conditions on that, and then make a decision as to whether we close that circuit off or not, if there's a fire approaching our lines. Now, why would we do that? Why would you think we would, if the fire is approaching, let's just say we're three miles out, and I don't know what that might be in terms of miles, but let's just say it's three miles out. Why would we be concerned if there's no fire right by our lines?
Lawsuits.
Well, yes, it's certainly the damage that could trigger those, right? Yeah. There are really two big reasons. Any other thoughts? One is safety. If you have firefighters out there, and we're dumping retardant on those fires, that retardant can actually become a conducting material if it coats the lines. It's like an agricultural fertilizer. If it gets up on those lines and you have an insulated that's cracked or something, and it gets inside of that insulator, when water hits that, it could arc. That's a potential. We don't want those firefighters working around energized lines. So for their safety, we're going to shut that down. The second reason is that if the fire comes in on this side, and it causes a fault that travels down to this side, and we have an arc flash, and it causes a fire down here, we now have another problem, don't we? So it's about safety. We want to make sure that we don't start that secondary fire and then cause a complex fire. And that could happen in two or three spots. So we want to avoid that. We want to make sure that you're safe, that we're safe, that our folks are safe, and make sure that we don't add to a wildfire or a wildfire risk. That make sense? Any questions about that? I'm surprised.
Well, I just spent, a month ago, I spent a full day over in Idaho Power Center.
Oh, yeah.
Going over all their fire prevention.
You bet.
And their course.
Yeah, good. It is identical to what we talk about here. One of the things that I do want to mention is that if we have to do a public safety power shut-off, we're going to be bringing in a community resource center. Now, that could be our requesting a physical facility from you, someplace in the county. It could be a large tent or a series of tents that we bring in. Inside those tents will be, we'll have a generator set up. Inside those tents will be charging, you know, plug-ins for cell phones. Typically, if people can stay in touch and they have their phone with them, we don't have nearly the, I think, across the spectrum, the emotional issues, the disconnection, they want to reach family, they want to reach friends, things like that, right? Whether the fire is impacting them or not, if the power's out, then we want them to have connection to their network. That's one thing. In some cases, we have brought pallets of ice in in rural communities where there's just no power anywhere for that small community, and so there's no way to have ice for coolers and things like that to protect food loss. So we might do that. We might bring in water. We'll just assess the needs. That really falls back to our emergency management folks and how they deal with that. I'm one of those who would be on the ground in that tent, in that area. We'd be working all hands on deck to make sure that folks are taken care of. Now, we're not there to lodge people. We're not there to handle medical emergencies. In one case in Oregon, we did have a religious group come in and want to hand out flyers. We do, we want that partnership, where folks can help come and take care of folks, but we're not necessarily looking for folks to come in and do that sort of thing, conduct that sort of activity. We're trying to take care of people and not impose on them in any way. So we'd watch that pretty carefully, too. But we'd be hand-in-hand with you as a community. We just ask that you all work on the emergency management side to actually take care of actual emergencies. I sat with the city here a while ago, and as we're sitting around the table, the ambulance driver looks at the mayor and says, "Do you recall the last power outage? We could not get the door up. You and I are very short." We could not get the ambulance door up to get the ambulance out. And so we had an ensuing conversation about how we fix that, whether it be, you know, chains, ropes, generator, what have you. But it's really good to have conversations around these kinds of events, because it's certainly much prior to them. And I know that your folks are doing that, you have great folks. But just assess what could happen in an emergency and how we handle that. As you all know, the time to plan is not in the middle of it. We got a call one day from a community, and they said, "Hey, Tim, thanks for the power outage last night." Now, I don't often get that, so my ears perked up a bit. And I said, "Well, thank you, but why? Why are you thanking me?" Well, there was a critical facility, and I won't say what it was, if there was a critical facility that required high security, and the door simply unlocked, allowing access to that facility. And so they were literally sincere about thanking me, because they found out what was happening, and they were able to fix it. In another case, we had an emergency manager call and say, "Tim, when is the power coming back on?" I said, "It's been back up for two hours." And the individual said, "Well, our entire 911 system is down." And come to find out, their generator had been wired incorrectly, and it was never going to bring the 911 system up. So we were grateful that that was discovered. I was glad we didn't have a mass casualty event from an earthquake or something like that. But we want to be partners with you. We want to make sure that we're maintaining safety, and I'll keep you updated on enhanced safety measures as we move along and let you know particular projects that are occurring across the county. But other than that, I appreciate your time.
Wes, any concerns?
No, we do a good job managing things with Tim on a regular basis as well as Brett from an emergency management perspective. And so between the two of them, we've got everything lined out. But Tim hit the nail right on the head. The system that they utilize is the same as what Idaho Power is using. And the big deciding factor on all of that aspect is going to be the wind. That's the biggest push.
Unlike today.
Supposed to have 50 mile an hour winds sacking in.
Yeah, that always worries me when I get that forecast.
Our meteorologists give us a report every morning, so we can see exactly what's going on across the entire six-state region.
Well, I can tell you that after going to the Idaho Power School, Costco has generators on sale right now.
Yeah.
About $200 off. I just went and bought one over the weekend. Made me think pretty serious, you know, these rolling blackouts. Well, in the city of Inkham, they was without water for a full day, you know, earlier this week.
Wow.
We had a split in the main line on one pump. The other pump, they'd reworked the head of it and thought it was okay, and then it froze up down in the shaft itself. And then the other pump went from 450 gallons a minute to 20 gallons a minute. So there's problems in the casing in it. So three pumps in a matter of, you know, 48 hours.
And it happens quickly, and the impacts happen quickly, right?
And the phone calls keep happening.
And the phone calls come in, and we get as prepared as we can get, right? But we can't solve everything, right? We'd like to, but we simply can't. So coming back to your comment, which is, we hope that folks, as we talk about these things, as you talk about them in the county, that people become more self-sufficient. If they have, if they're at risk for something, that they mitigate that risk before an emergency actually occurs. And we have some resources if folks need help doing that, we advertise that to customers, so.
Any questions?
So these public safety power shut-offs.
Yeah.
There's not a fire when you're implementing these.
Typically, under those.
But you're afraid there might be something happen with your system that would cause a fire. Is that right?
Yes. We don't want our system causing a fire.
And why would it be any more risky that a fire might start at that time than some other time? Or if a fire starts, I'm assuming what you're saying is that it could get out of control.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a wonderful question. Let's go back to the term environmental conditions. So we monitor on every circuit what those environmental conditions are. So it's humidity, it's barometric pressure, wind speed, Wes raised. On a day like this, at 65 miles an hour, in very dry conditions, with dry grass down below, if anything happened on that line, under those environmental conditions, there's a potential for a fire. So sparks could hit the ground, you know, whatever that fault might be. It could be wind taking a pole down. We've had microbursts that have taken down 22 transmission poles. That is a significant powerful force. It snapped them off of the ground. Now, if you're in dry conditions and those poles are toppling, and those lines are energized and they're sparking, and there's an arc flash of any sort, and that gets into dry grass, then we have a fire. So we don't want to risk that. We're going to shut that line down and risk that fire.
How often are fires started from something going wrong with your system?
I can't even answer that question. There are certainly.
Is this a high probability of this happening, or is it a minimal probability?
So I think that in the right conditions, there could be a reasonable probability of a fire starting.
And what do you mean by the right conditions? The right conditions with your lines?
Yeah, again, going back to environmental conditions that we monitor all.
That's different, though, than your lines. So you're saying the environmental conditions are such that if a fire starts, it could get out of control?
Yes.
But there's no difference that I can see in the probability of your system doing something that causes a fire?
That's correct, Commissioner, but the risk is there. So that line could be brand-new. Everything on it could be brand-new. But if there's a risk that, given the environmental conditions, that anything happened on that line could start a fire, we don't want to take that risk.
Isn't that risk the same no matter what, that a fire could start? I mean, that's not going to change because of environmental conditions. The risk that a fire might start with your system doesn't change because of the outside environment.
It does.
It does change.
It does change, yes.
The risk that if it starts, it gets out of control, or the risk that it'll actually, that a fire would actually start?
Any sparking. For instance, if a, let's just say that a raccoon climbs up inside those lines and causes an arc. Now, that is going to go back possibly to a transformer. Cause an arc right across those lines.
A raccoon gets in the line, is what you said?
That's right. Or an eagle.
Right.
Or a squirrel up on my dad's house.
Yeah, you might have a squirrel get up in a transformer. When that transformer blows, there's a very high likelihood that sparks should go and hit the ground.
But that doesn't change because of environmental condition. That risk is the same.
It is, but the environmental conditions coupled with any line, any energized line, increases the risk.
When you began your presentation, I think you said you were taking steps to mitigate the potential risk of your system.
Yes.
Causing a fire.
We are.
Bearing lines underground.
In some cases, right.
Other actions are taken.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So where we think that there is a greater risk in the area, in other words, more vegetation, more of a rural area, less irrigated crops, for instance, we might call it a fire-high-consequence area. And we would come in and inculcate those enhanced safety measures on that line for that reason. Now, in town.
Aren't there ways to take care of the dry vegetation that's near the transmission lines and things of that nature? I mean, from what I understand, a lot of this problem that they have in California is basically through mismanagement of their forests, where they let the stuff grow, grow, grow. They never do controlled burns to kind of keep the fuel level down, and then they do have a problem. And it's not always clear to me that the problem came from electric transmissions. They like to claim that. I'm not sure it's always true.
Well, you're exactly right. Of course, we, anytime there's a fire, the first suspect is a utility line. In Oregon, of course, wildfires erupted during COVID, and there were a lot of allegations made that Pacific Corp lines, just like PG and E Lines in California, started those fires. Now, I'll just be transparent, there was proof, there was no proof on either side. There was no way of identifying whether those lines actually started those fires. But coming out of that, we're saying we don't want any danger at all. And so you come back to the vegetation issue. Each state, each county, each federal agency has to make determinations on how they handle vegetation. Utility can't come in, the utility can come in and manage that to a certain extent. For instance, we can't have vegetation within 30 feet of a high-voltage transmission line. It's going to be another clearance for distribution lines. We have to keep that clearance in place. So you'll see our vegetation management folks going out and trimming trees. Folks don't like that. You'll see our trucks out. Those are contractors, and they're cutting branches, and they're trimming trees to keep those away from the lines for that reason. So we do what we can, and within our service territory, for the most part, I think every public utilities commission in the six states, within the context of rules, we have the right to come in and trim that vegetation. Now, it doesn't mean that we can come in and do a scorched earth policy, going through a national forest, or even across a private easement, for that matter. So we can't come in and apply chemicals that just take it right down. We can't actually go and plow the easement, things like that. But we do try to make sure that whatever we can do is done to manage that vegetation. But the danger never goes away entirely.
That's right. You're not going to eliminate the risk.
That's right.
No matter what you do.
That's exactly right.
I don't like the idea of shutting off people's power.
I know.
I would rather see other actions taken.
Yeah.
You're not going to eliminate the risk. That's a pretty severe step, in my opinion.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you. Know that we're doing all we can on the enhanced safety measure side to. Know that we're doing all we can on the enhanced safety measure side to, to mitigate that. As you and I have both stated, it's impossible to mitigate for everything. We will do all that we can do. In some cases, you'll find us placing switches at the boundary of a municipality where we have asphalt, we have concrete. And, and so that switch, we could actually keep the power on down to that switch so that the town has power, for instance, and the fire high consequence area would be turned off. So you'll wa, you'll, you'll see us placing different switching and line fault indicators all along those lines for that reason. But, but again, Commissioner, I would much rather have you angry with me for turning off power to a town or to a rural area than having a fire start and having you mad at me for that. The, the risks, the dangers of a fire are far more significant than turn off the power for some hours or even a couple of days. We recognize it isn't easy to, to, to consider this. And, you know, most folks at this point would say, well, has it happened? Yes, it absolutely has. In Utah and Oregon, we've had to take public safety power shut offs. Have we had to do it in Idaho? No, not yet. And, and I, every time a cloud comes over, we get a cloudy day, I'm grateful. I want to see rain falling. I want to see the wind stop. But in the end, we're going to do everything we can do to protect our customers and surrounding communities. We're just not going to take a chance with that. Hard to hear, but it's, it's where we are. It's where we have to be at this point.
Well, I don't think we're going to agree on that and I think we'll just leave it at that.
I understand that, Commissioner. Appreciate the conversation very much. And we're, we're always appreciative of feedback and, and ideas specifically for counties and cities and, and what you'd like to see. If there are alternatives that you think we're not considering, I would love to hear that.
Well, I like your alternatives.
And we're doing that. Be assured that it is an all of the above strategy, yeah.
Oh, I know, there's a lot of effort being put in, but it's also come down to you guys have to protect yourself too because there's a lot of lawsuits that are coming forward now. And as long as that's happening and you're, everybody thinks you have the deep pockets, you got to protect yourself too.
Risk mitigation is a significant part of, of every utility, that's for sure.
Like I said, the water went out in Inkham and they were getting a lot of calls.
Yeah.
We're, we're used to convenience, that's for sure.
It is.
I'm spoiled just like everybody else.
Yeah. Yeah. We do get to that point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
All right. You representing charity?
Yeah.
All right.
You got, you got me today.
You're welcome.
I am Crystal Denny. I'm with CCOG.
Wes Jones, Office of Emergency Management.
And there's two items and charity sent me with three, but I have two that were on the agenda, right?
Yep.
Two items on the agenda today. The first is for the Bureau of Land Management grant. We received a notification that that's been awarded. And so the decision today is, do you want to accept the award?
Yes.
First question. And then second, does the county want to use CCOG as the grant administrator? We have a proposed, excuse me, a proposed contract not to exceed 15,000 for that award. And then the third is, does the county want to use Joe McGuire, who's been the field specialist on the other Department of Lands projects as the field specialist for this project?
Okay.
Any questions?
Wes, comments?
Yeah, and I think this is, this goes hand in hand with more efficiency and ease of operations because we've been using SCOG for, for a lot of these grants specific to the fuel reduction projects. And then we interface back in with the grant team and put those things in place and where Joe, it was very difficult to find a contractor to come in and do some of the, the field work. And so if we can keep Joe busy doing some of those until the other projects kick off, I'd highly recommend that.
And all these fees are paid within the grant?
Absolutely.
No match?
Correct.
Questions, concerns? Anything?
Nope.
Okay. I'd say we can move forward.
Okay.
We're talking about fuel reduction and all these other things and fires.
I know, this was a great, thank you, Tim, for, this was a great segue into this project.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to have a motion made.
Go ahead.
And you, we're just going to, we're going to approve all her requests here?
That's what I would say.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. All right, so next steps, I know that the question will come up about a reimbursement schedule and that will be at least annually, but we can amend that as we need to with the grant team or.
We're just working with them on when we want reimbursements so that like on the last grant, we're not sitting out so far outstanding with dollars.
Okay.
But we'll look that up with CCOG.
Perfect.
You're, you're in contact with the right people then?
Yep. Okay, all right, the other item, any other questions about the Bureau of Land Management grant?
Nope.
Okay, perfect, all right, that is, she gave me a whole folder, she's so good. The other item on the agenda is the grant writing contract with CCOG. And this has been presented in a previous meeting and it had to go through, I think, some small edits and legal counsel before it was signed. So this is, we're wrapping back around. There was a change. There were some verbiage changes, I know, but the major cha, it's not even a major change. It is, oh, we don't have page, yes, we do, page two. CCOG will not proceed with grant writing services unless permission is given by Bannock County, specifically by the Bannock County Board of Commissioners. CCOG will invoice Bannock County as per the fee schedule above upon submission of an approved application. The sum of services performed will not exceed the total project cost of $75,000 annually. And then the second paragraph is where the change is. If for any reason approval has been granted to proceed with grant writing services, but the services are canceled by Bannock County before timely submission of the grant proposal to Bannock County, the sum of services performed up to that point shall be compensated at the rate of $75, not to exceed the original fee. And that was to protect CCOG. If we got all the way up to the finish line and for some reason that grant was pulled, maybe there was a change in budget at the county where then local fees were able, or local monies were able to, to fund that project and we didn't need grant monies, that our services, our time would still be compensated.
But then we also had them add, if the grant, grant deadline is missed due to CCOG, we will not be charged.
Absolutely.
So we wanted to make sure that was clarified, that they wouldn't be out any money if, if the, I don't want to say default, but if the, the process wasn't able to follow because of us, but if it was not followed because of them, then we wouldn't be hopeful.
So that needs to be put in here.
That is in here. Both, both items are in there, that's the very next sentence.
And I'm going to hold off on voting on this till Tuesday because I want Jeff, he's been involved with this quite a bit, and I want him to review and make sure that we get his input also. Do you have any concerns with that?
No, and I like this. I think this is, these are good clauses that have been added. It protects both parties and I'd like to move forward as soon as possible, but I'm happy to have Jeff's input on Tuesday.
He's been so involved with it that, that I haven't talked to him. I don't know if you've talked to him about it, but I.
Not recently.
I would like his stamp of approval also.
Yeah, sure thing.
So you don't have to come back on Tuesday, but, but we'll put it, Brad, will you make sure this gets back on the agenda for Tuesday, just so that we have the review.
We also added on this contract, upon 30 days written notice from either party, that the contract could be terminated. So that's, that was normal standard language that's in most of our contracts, but it was missing in this one, so we added that as well.
Okay. Okay.
Perfect.
All right.
Any other questions for me? Concerns?
Commissioner Huff actually said he's good with it as presented.
Oh, okay, you got him on the line.
He just texted me.
Okay. All right, you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Perfect, thank you. And then if I can just get a signed contract email.
Just tapping portal, send it.
Okay, awesome, thanks so much.
All right, thank you. All right, Wes, you're back up.
Seems like today's the day for mitigation activities. Wes Jones, Office of Emergency Management. Do you have a copy of the burn ban in front of you? Do you have a copy of last year's resolution?
This is actually in the, in a resolution right now.
Okay. So what we do is we take the burn ban and that's the template that rolls over into the resolution. So any changes to our, our burn ban and the press release, that modification goes into the resolution as it's made. So what we wanted to try to do is get the burn ban press release put out to the community because Pocatello went with the burn ban yesterday. It takes us a little longer to get all the approvals for, to buy in for the press release because we're dealing with nine different fire departments as compared to Pocatello with just the one. So once we get everything put together and then we're good to go, we go with that countywide burn ban, which makes it a lot simpler and easier for the community at large and it's a, it's a total front of consolidation with the fire departments. So this burn ban goes from July 1st till October.
October 1st.
It's pretty much boilerplate. We've been doing the same thing for the last three years.
Any questions, John?
I'm not seeing this on my, in my packet.
That was the amendment that was put in.
Okay, for some reason I missed it.
Like Wes says, this is the same thing we've done the last couple of years.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, I don't have any concerns about it.
Okay. So we have resolution number 2024-38. Need a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution as requested.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Okay, so then I'll give this information to Emma and we can just go with the press release today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Scott, you're up.
Scott Crowder, vendor director, business manager. I've got a couple items to discuss today. First is the, an update to the Bannock County Event Center vendor agreement. So this agreement, just for a little bit of context, was created a couple of years ago and essentially replaced the electrical inspection that we were doing. So we had an agreement where people would come up and we would do an electrical, electrical inspection and then they were, once they had that electrical inspection, then they could vend on our property with a, with a contract to do so. So we put this one together, we removed the electrical inspection component, we found out we didn't need it. And so this essentially just allows people to come up and vend on our property. But one of the things that we were made aware of by a current vendor is that we didn't have any language in there that said that it had to be under a specific contract, which had always been the practice, right? So this was, this was us giving them permission, but then whoever had an event that was contracted, whether it's Pocatello Downs or a rodeo or something, they could go vend at their event. So we had a vendor that came in, filled out one of these forms and then just parked a, a piece of equipment to start vending wherever he wanted, whenever he wanted. And so as we reviewed this, we realized, okay, we needed to just add some language to just clarify that this was for a, that they could do concessions during Bannock County authorized contracted events, right? And if we wanted to go out and authorize a contract with somebody to come up and sell slushies or something like that, we could, there would be a contract between us and them. And this just allows them to vent on the property for other events if they're contracted. And so it was just some language that we wanted to add to that that essentially allowed us to say, these are the times you can do it. You don't just get to park wherever you want and vend whenever you want. And so, and then the other thing I wanted to add to it that was not on there for some reason was a part where our staff had to sign accepting the agreement. So it was just signed by the person that wanted to do it and we accepted them. There was nothing that said we reviewed and accepted the contract. And so I added another line in that just said that the agreement is, is reviewed and approved by, and one of our staff members' names to essentially, because that also allows us to know who talked to them about the rules, right? These are the rules that we can use to vend up here. So there's no changes to the, to the legality or the structure of the contract, just adding a few words, so.
Just clarifications?
Yeah.
Questions, comments? Motion to accept this?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the new contract recommendations as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. And then as far as signatures, so I was authorized to sign on all full fee contracts at the event center, so as long as it met the fee schedule. You guys also allowed Annie and Jake to sign on a, a lower dollar amount contract. I think it was $150. But it essentially, it was when I was out of town, so they needed to sign for pavilion rentals or if somebody wanted to come in and rent maybe a rodeo arena or something along those lines. So Annie has moved to a different department. We've got a few new staff, a few new staff members in and I just would like to get them authorized to sign on pavilions. Pavilion's a $50 fee and those usually come in the day somebody wants to rent a pavilion, they'll come in and fill out the form. And so, so I would request that we authorize, you know, Chaney and Terry and Felicia, who is a new member to our staff, and then also Riley. That's our, essentially our management team. And we did $150 because that'll allow them to run out B building if they needed to, but also allow them to do a, an arena.
Not just the general operations of, of business to me. I mean, they have to be able to, you can't bring them to you or have to be backed to us for something like that. I mean, that's just like an RV park rental to me.
Yes, it is.
You, you just have to be able to conduct business.
So let's just make sure in your procedures that it says the commission has given authority to, I mean, at their full fee, so you're not deviating.
And it might be.
Maybe we'll just make sure that's in there somewhere.
It might make sense to do it positionally rather than personally.
Yes, definitely.
That way, as people change in positions, I don't have to, we don't have to come in and add them in.
We're just identifying.
We just say those positions, yes.
The management team and identify those positions and then just.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, eh? In charge?
No, it's what, up to $150?
Yeah, I think we just, we, that was the limit we had come up with before. I don't know. You know, most of our, I think the, I don't, no, I don't think, but if you want, if somebody wanted to rent the amphitheater or the grandstands, that's a contract only, even though we have a, a fee that's kind of a general fee associated with that. So those all come before you guys regardless. So typically, the things that I'm, I'm signing are going to be like maybe a contract that has multiple dates, right? So the contract starts exceeding, you know, the contracts can get pretty big and, you know, because they're just renting the venue over and over and over again. So, but again, it's, as long as it's full fee, like Friday Night Flags, they come and rent for the whole season, you know? And so that's a full fee rental, so we rent that out to them for the season. So that's why this, I would prefer to still review those contracts that are going to be bigger and longer, have an impact on the entire season, so. But this allows people to rent for days, you know, or for any of these.
All of those contracts, do you guys, do you scan those and save them somewhere? Is there any way we could do a shared drive?
They go on rec desk and I think your staff have.
Oh, we do. Okay, so we're on rec desk, we've got.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So, so right now, who's authorized, how many people do you have authorized to sign these?
Just Jake and I. And Jake can, Jake can sign the, like the pavilion rentals, even though he was, he's like a backup to it, really, we want our office staff. So I prefer to just give it positionally, that it's based off of this job title.
So right now it's an individual? So, right now, it's an individual name to sign these things?
Yep, just like I'm individually named to sign those.
So, what you're going to do is you're going to authorize a few more people to sign these things and you're going to do it by position?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And then, one other factor that I talked to Brian about with this, so I can, these contracts can be terminated, right? They have a termination clause in them. They can either be terminated based off of a violation in the contract or with a thirty day notice. And we just need to verify or maybe make sure it's in our agreement that I have the ability to sign for full fee contracts and terminate full fee. I need to be able to terminate those contracts as well. As long as you guys are okay with that, then I'm the one writing the letter saying, we kick, we're kicking you guys out and then you guys will be the appeal board.
You're the one that's seeing what's going on. I mean, I have no problem with that. Somebody's giving you problems, it doesn't need to wait to come to us.
Okay.
All right? I'm motioning on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the changes and authorizations as presented.
You have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
And then, we have all your contracts?
I don't think I have any contracts.
For the Fourth of July?
Oh, the vendor agreements?
Vendor agreements.
Yeah. And the vendor agreements, there's no fee reductions in those, it's just a standard vendor agreement that we, yeah, it's a standard vendor agreement. We don't put it on the Fourth, or I don't think that one's on the fee schedule. I don't think any of our vendor agreements are on the fee schedule currently.
Which is probably why you have to sign them.
Yeah.
Okay.
And really, there are kind of three different types of vendor agreements we'll have. One may be for concerts where we entered into agreement with a vendor where they give us a percentage of their profits. Another one with the Fourth of July is just going to be a higher cost. I think the vendor agreement for the Fourth of July is like three hundred and fifty dollars. Is that right? No? I don't remember.
Are you talking about these vendors that are doing food instead?
Yes.
I think it's three hundred for the food vendors.
I think, I'm not exactly sure on how much it is for the Fourth of July.
There's two different things. There's the food vendors and then there's two hundred something for the non-food vendors.
Yes, yes. So, those are, those are the contracts that you see before, yeah.
Yeah. And we've signed them.
Do we need a motion on that?
That's aye. I didn't see it here.
I don't hear on the thing. I think, I think we're good.
This should be approved.
Yeah. It hasn't.
Sign, oh, right there at the bottom. Signature on independent, yeah. So, we have a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move we sign all the vendor agreements.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Shanda, go ahead and come up.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer. I have a procurement update for the board today. We'd like to start at the top with the detention center cement polishing. That draft has been issued out to the department and like always, they were super quick to get it right back. Levi has gotten an email back to me today. So, I've received a comment back and the current plan is to publish that on Tuesday, July the second.
Good.
The next one for the assessor's office, the annex fire suppression. That draft has also been out to the department and I believe I have an email back from Dan in my inbox as well to get that one moving forward. In regards to the rest of that annex project for the HVAC system, we have received the drawings for the HVAC. We've also received the drawings for the lighting and the ceiling, so I'm playing a little bit of catch-up on those two and I'll look at drafts out to Dan here this afternoon for review. But, the plan is to have all three of those projects published in ISJ on Wednesday or Friday. They'll all go out together. If we jump down to what does say live, but the commission for the security cameras, it did take me a little longer than I anticipated to finalize that scope of work and I missed the deadline to post an ISJ, so it is not live. It will be live tomorrow is when it will go. And then, it'll post the next Friday as well. In regards to the detention center landscaping project, we had a pre-bid meeting with contractors yesterday. We had three different contracting companies show up, so we're excited for that project and the questions are due from them on Monday for that one. In regards to the facilities for the two boilers, that is under evaluation and we plan to have a recommendation back before the board on Tuesday.
I talked to Dan yesterday and we'll probably operate under the old boiler this year. It'll get under, it'll get bid and be under contract, but he doesn't want to in November and December be without knowing that he has that, so.
Yeah.
He's aware of the timeline, but doesn't want to be without heat either.
And we need to get with Shanda. We've got some new information on new uniform guidance.
Okay.
For ARPA funds, so there might be some verbiage changes on the contracts before we have departments start shelling those out or having vendors sign them.
Okay.
We just want to make sure we have everything covered on them.
Okay. So, we do have one that has gone out for the HVAC out at the jail. They are supposed to sign and have it back to me today. Do I need to change that one or?
Only if the project-
It's up to them.
Oh. Only if the project's not going to be done by December thirty first. I'm only worried about contracts for those projects that are going to extend past that deadline.
So, that one might. Again, talking about the boiler being down and the air being down in there, Levi had it scheduled that something was going to be done this fall and then the next thing won't happen until the spring.
Okay. We just need to, there may not be any changes to the contracts, we just need to verify that all the FAQs for ARPA are addressed.
Depending on the timing of the contract signature.
Yeah. So, we'll do that. I just wanted to, that happened yesterday afternoon. I haven't had a chance to talk to you or the board, so we'll work towards that and worst case, we haven't signed a new contract.
Okay. Okay, I will triple check with you after this meeting in regards to that one. That is the only one I currently have out. The boiler would be next, but we could still make those adjustments before it goes out. Okay. Here we go. Oh, so then with the jail HVAC, I just said that contract is out to the company for review and barring, I have all the documentation back to me, right? They still have to get certificates of insurance, public works licenses, things like that. As long as they have all that back to me, the plan is to have it before the board on Tuesday. Excuse me for signature. The last update is in regards to the Lava Ranch's fuel reduction contracts. So, as we are very aware and have discussed multiple times today about fire, as we head into that season for this project, there was a requirement in that contract that said that he had to have fifty percent of his equipment onsite within fifteen days of signing the contract and the remaining equipment within thirty. Moving all of that equipment to that site and then shutting everything down for fire season and have fire season be shut down for two or three months seemed pointless to everybody. So, we would propose an amendment. That amendment should be back to me today. We'll submit it to legal just to make sure. We're just going to reset that clock. He'll still have to meet the fifteen and thirty day deadlines. It'll just be as our project manager, I think is the joke's title. I can't remember. Once he lifts the ban and says that there's no longer fire concern with that project, once he emails that everybody in writing, that's when the clock will start ticking for those days, but that'll be in an amendment before the board. So, the contract and the amendment will come before the board, I'm hoping next week on that, but just a little adjustment due to timing. And that is all I have today.
Thank you. I did meet with the engineer and with, or with the architect and with Dan yesterday about Downey. And they, he's still come in with like three million dollars and I said, no. So, the, he's going to do a drawing of a shell and with the bathrooms and stuff in it, a million? And then, Dan says we can work on the additions and the extras later, so office space and all that kind of stuff won't be in there, but we'll get a design and a million dollars. Stressed very, very much.
While we're also still kind of on procurement, Shanda corrected me on these enterprise invoices. I did not realize we had to pay the invoice and the management fees, which are out of, what are they called?
The out-of-cycle.
Yeah, the out-of-cycle fee. So, that number I quoted you is incorrect. I will be bringing that back to you.
Okay.
We'll just have more to pay for those out-of-cycle portions. It's basically the management fee that they would be missing out because we're terminating it already. So, I'll go ahead and process, well, I'll hold on to what I have and then I'll have brought forward probably next week, paying those same invoices out of, but I don't have that number. We'll have to rerun a tape on it.
Okay. Yeah, just get us the numbers and we'll have that conversation.
Okay, I'll just submit them on Wednesday for authorization.
Okay.
Through normal channels.
Okay. All right. Brayden, team.
Hey, Brayden Clayson, Chief of Staff. Christie very kindly gave me this assignment during budget meetings, so I reached out to Hal, the sheriff and Public Works, and we have a buddy here today filling in for Kyle just regarding safety and ordinance checks and things of that nature. I'm going to let Hal open it up because I think that's kind of where it started. Hal?
Hal Jensen, Planning Director, Bannock County. It's a pleasure. Thanks Brayden and Christie for thinking ahead to get us all the collective heads together to make a presentation. We've had conversation about how we vision this potentially could work. We have a number of items. We have, since we talked last, I told you that in six weeks, we had eleven code violations that came in, which is typical of spring and summer, early summer. We have two more that now are on the table that we're starting to work through and it becomes a very heavy workload. Under the ordinance, we go verify the complaint, at which point we then send a letter. If we receive no response, we then send a second letter. Sometimes, depending on the severity, we will ask one of the sheriffs to deliver the letters, at which point, if we don't receive any response, it then qualifies under our ordinance to send it to Brian for legal action. The problem that we have is because of the timeframe of letters, letters then to Brian in his schedule or that team's schedule, we now have gone so far down the path that the violation is, becomes more difficult, okay? So, when I came to you in budget, we had had conversation between Roden Bridge and my office about some of the difficulties that we encounter and what would make sense. So, in my presentation in budget, I said it would be nice to consider a full-time position that would potentially be assigned to our office. I've thought about and had conversation, perhaps half of the salary comes from Roden Bridge and half of the salary comes from P and D's budgets. There is an open office space in our office building that that person could be and become trained in the language of the ordinance and the potential violations, et cetera. Someone who's very much trained in regards to enforcement would be potentially the position. Had conversation with the sheriff just prior to and they volunteered a very good solution from their side. We find that when a sheriff shows up with a violation, we get a lot better response and it comes to a resolution, shall we say, much, much quicker. If I had or we had someone that could then deliver those and the sheriff could go as a backup, meaning there's two people that are handing the letter, one that would have potentially a polo shirt that had a logo, so it had a little more of an official presentation at the doorstep and then a sheriff, a uniform sheriff there, potentially we could get it. And I know that Sheriff's Department has volunteered to go and accompany at any, at any given time. But, that's somewhat how we see we could get these types of things taken care of better. The last five to ten years with the growth in Bannock County, we just, we just see more and potentially, depending on where society continues to go and where Bannock County continues to grow with its growth patterns, there's potential for even a greater need. So, in the wintertime, Roden Bridge has issues with snow removal violations that need to be taken care of and, you know, for everything that we deal with from weed, mosquito and ordinance and building or, building code, et cetera, we could, at this point with where Bannock County has grown, we could, we could definitely use a full-time position to keep everybody busy.
Buddy?
Yeah, Buddy Romrell, Public Works Assistant Director. Just in the last few months, we've had three letters that we've had to send out on different code violations from, you know, from trees in the road, which typically we take care of that if it's on our right of way, but if there's a tree that's growing on their property over top of the road, that's something that we haven't really addressed at this point. We have one here where we had a resident who was landscaping in the right of way. We had stopped at his place five to ten times with no avail and finally, we sent a letter and, and we did get through that one, but a code enforcement officer would be huge on situations like that. In our weed department, we get calls from neighbors complaining about their, other neighbors' noxious weed infestations and, again, getting that contact with them and actually getting them to do something is two different things, but I do think there's some, several things to think about in which direction we go with the weed department and how commission would like us to move forward if we do send out these letters because there is certain laws in place that they do have to be sprayed within a certain amount of time. So, I don't think we should go hog wild with it by any means, but maybe start lightly and move forward that way. Yeah.
Yeah, I told them I needed three more patrolmen for this and they said they'd be for it. I'm just kidding. No, we're good. No, we definitely agree with that solution. It's like I said earlier, I don't think we need to pay for certified deputy to do something like this. We definitely have the manpower to be able to assist because I don't think everyone's going to be a problem, a problem child, but we definitely would be able to assist with those. And then, we talked about maybe in the future, as like you said, more people move into the area and this demand of maybe there's more codes that are violating, being violated and this grows into something more serious, then maybe that position evolves into something that we need to handle full-time. Right now, I think this is a good solution and we can kind of assist when necessary and I even told myself that the chief would go out if we had to, if we didn't have any guys on the streets. And we would, I mean, it's, we like doing that stuff, so.
We'd send Brayden out.
Yeah, but a hundred percent, we'd do something like that, so.
So, we had a little bit of discussion about this the other day when we was talking about positions and salaries and stuff like that and rather, it needed to be a full-time position and stuff or like we do over in elections. Do you want to elaborate on that just a little bit?
Well, just, it's going to be hard to fund this year with everything else commissioners are trying to do for pay increases. It's not going to work out to be a full-time position, so we suggested doing a part-time position similar to what we do for our election staff over there where they work. It's how many hours it's-
Five months, a hundred and twenty hours a month.
A hundred and twenty hours a month is what they can work for five months on and then they have to take a month off and then they can come back again. So, that's, that's what we talked about, trying to fund.
Is that a benefited position too?
No.
Could I ask you a question on this? How many violation letters are you guys sending out a year?
Not enough.
That's my question.
No. It's compared to how many you're sending out and those that you should be sending out.
That's-
And that's what we discussed out there. I asked the same question, but I think it's a matter of, do you have, do you have the person out to do it or do you feel comfortable sending that person out there? I think if you have that person in position, you're probably going to send more out.
Correct. And as a, as a start, what Jason suggested is a move in the right direction and it will, as Tony just said, those that need to get done in a more timely fashion are done, et cetera. For instance, we receive a code violation and the first thing that we need to do in our, in my office is to send somebody out to go verify the condition. We had one that came in. There is a structure that's clear on the south end of Bannock County, up off of the foothill almost to Malad, that is being advertised now as an Airbnb. up off of the foothill almost to Malad, that is being advertised now as an Airbnb. We have no construction out in that particular area of Ag, so we have nobody that's down there. No one patrols that per se. We don't have a patrol officer that goes and looks for code violations until we hear something from somebody, which then requires that we take somebody who's in the middle of a task, whether it's myself or whoever it might be among my team, get in the car and go down and verify that the violation's taking place. Then we come back, take the time to script the letter, or try to contact, bring them to the table, start the conversations. If we don't get any, send a letter, send a second letter, then to Brian. And by that time, I have a structure that's been inhabited now for three to six months with people coming and going as an Airbnb that has never had any eyes set on it on whether or not it even meets life safety relative to the building code. Those are the kind, it can be a potentially very time-consuming position. And the reason that I bring it up is because it takes somebody four to six hours in a week from their normal tasks. And like I said, I'm now up to 13 of them this spring, following process and procedure. That's a lot of time away from all of the other tasks that we're working on, so.
So this year to date, how many of you have?
I believe we are, code violations, we are at 13.
13 for six months.
Correct.
Yes. I don't see funding a position for this at all, even part-time. If you, and it sounds like not all of these visits are, you're even contacting anybody, but when you're going to contact them personally, at that time, the sheriff said they can send someone to assist. So I wouldn't be in favor of funding a position. I'd like you to work with the sheriff, get his help when you need it, and let's see how that goes.
Okay.
But that's what has been happening.
Correct.
Has it been happening? Have you guys been taking the sheriff with you?
Yes.
Sometimes.
But not always.
Only on the more difficult ones that don't respond.
Yeah, and I wouldn't expect you to take him every single time, but every time there's an issue or a potential issue, then it sounds like you're already dealing, working with the sheriff to take care of that.
For the most part, yes.
Yeah, this is, you know, what I've seen of the budget so far, I think this would be, I don't see this getting done, so I would say.
I disagree 100%. I think it's something that we've talked about. I think it's something in both departments. And all I, you probably didn't get all the calls on Dyers' Ward that I got this year.
Well, I got some of them.
But like I say, and that's part of code enforcement. So we have two different departments right here that are not staffed to be able to do the code enforcement part of what has to happen in Bennett County, in my opinion.
Well, I think the other, the other difficulty we have as a deputy or myself or even the, is when we go out there, we're dealing with something that's so out of our area that I couldn't tell you if it was, yeah, you violating it, you know, it's one of those, we're depending on whoever's with us to know that the elements of the crime that they're doing within that word. Because we're just going, yeah, I guess you're violating it. We're not, we're not well-versed in that. I guess the advantage of that position would be that person, whoever's doing that daily task of that, would be someone that's well-versed in that. And then our role would be, if that person that they're having problems with transitions into a criminal act, then we can now deal with that person in a criminal manner based on how he's being dealt with while he's with this code enforcement. And it's like anything else. For us, we try to massage the issue as much as you can, and we talked about whether you do it by the law or the spirit of law, and you try to do it as civil as possible first. And for me, I don't know, it's just tougher. It's like dealing with a civil issue. For us, we go out into civil issue, oh, it's civil, you know, until they do something that crosses that line, the criminal, then we're more comfortable in our world as far as dealing with it. But like, it's like code, I will tell you, when you deal with ordinances and you talk to a deputy, they'll be like, duh. I guess.
But you're going with these guys. You're just really a presence.
Correct.
But they're pulling people off of their normal daily jobs to go do code enforcement. We haven't had a code enforcement person for a while.
There are times that they give us the paperwork and say, will you go serve this?
Who does that?
And that is so uncomfortable for us, because we don't know, we're not versed in this. He may or may not have somebody to send out there, and there's times Hal calls us and says, here's the paperwork, will you go serve this? And we're like, uh, okay, but.
So most of the time, Commissioner Crowder, most of the time when we rely on the sheriff, it's because we've had confrontation with that person. And so we ask the sheriff to take the letter and deliver it.
So you've got 13 issues this year so far?
And we've literally had people that have refused the letter.
Yeah, that's gonna happen.
And we don't get refusals if we ask the sheriff to deliver it.
How many times, so 13 issues, how many times has the sheriff, have you asked the sheriff to participate in help?
On this year? None, none yet.
Okay.
I don't know, I think there's just that. It's either you look at it one way or you look at it, somehow there's a comfort level in having an ordinance. It's like every south city that we deal with, they want us to deal with their ordinances, and we don't, we can't. We don't do that. We don't know your ordinances. I can't sit there and define your ordinances to a person when they ask questions about, well, what am I violating? Uh, I don't know, go ask city council, or go ask Hal. That's kind of, that's kind of that comfort level of when you have a person that deals with it. It's like us dealing with day-to-day criminal acts. We do that all day long, and we'll know when we're in our lane and we're within the elements of the crime. But you deal with ordinances, that's a whole different world. And having somebody that's well-versed, he can sit there as we're talking and maybe having a discussion with that property owner. That person's gonna be, this is exactly why, blah, blah, blah. They asked us, I'll be like, well, it's because Hal said so. You know, so there's a bit of dialogue that's better if you have someone that's well-versed in it than us going out there and trying to explain an ordinance that we're not, well, it's because you're five degrees off of a plumbing, or whatever, you know. Well, for example, like in Labahot Springs, they had an ordinance officer. He knows the ordinances for that city where our officer's not versed in that. And if they had a problem person, we would go assist them. We're assisting their ordinance officer, and we're not enforcing, because we don't know all the ordinances, and then we'd be there to assist that person. So that's kind of the relationship I see, and it goes smoothly when we're dealing with the small towns and they've got their ordinance officer. Like you said, we're just a presence, but if they do cross that into that criminal line of how they're reacting to that person, then you've kind of got a dual, like, okay, you're gonna get cited for this and you're gonna get arrested, because now you're threatening people, you know. So that's kind of where I feel like it would be beneficial for the county. You'd probably get more violations.
And my understanding from what Hal and Buddy are telling me too, is there's also ordinances that we're really not enforcing right now, because we don't have that officer, like the snow removal, the Dyers' Ward, and these other ordinances that the county's not enforcing right now because there isn't that officer in place.
I kind of feel it'd be more active.
You could be as busy as you wanted to be, especially.
This time so far this year, you've been requested to go zero times.
As far, well, I'm just, I don't know that.
I'd like to see, you know, if you've got these situations where you need the sheriff's help, let's start doing that, because it doesn't sound like you have the sheriff involved at the moment in any of this stuff.
Well, I tell you that I went with them because of one individual, and the sheriff's officer was there also. So I personally went on one of these calls.
I guess the question is how active do you want that person? Do you want them to enforce ordinances, or do you not? I mean, or do we act on it as a county?
Why do we have ordinances then, if we're not enforcing?
I guess that's.
It's lensing something to me.
Yeah, and I'm not arguing against not enforcing ordinances, but I'm just not seeing a position.
And that's something we'll talk about when we talk about budget, but we just invited these guys here to get their opinions. But, and that's when we talked about, the other day, we talked about a part-time position and who we could get to do that. Maybe it's one of the retired deputies that ends up being a, wanting to come back for five months or whatever. I don't know, we have deputies that, you know, that are retired that work in other departments. We had one that was up at Roden Bridge for a while and stuff. So I think it's something worth trying.
Well, just not counting his 13 and my three, we spoke about three of them out here that aren't even on here that we're doing literally nothing with, just because it's simply time. I mean, it's, we don't have the time to go around to all these different places and issues and address them all.
So I'm gonna squirrel just a little bit. Building a residential in a pole barn that is already built, is that legal?
Building inside?
Mm-hmm. I make it a residence.
No.
And we had a guy in here for BOE saying, this, I just built this inside my pole barn, and that's what I asked him. I says, where's your building permit? Well, I don't know if I got one or not, but it's just stuff like that.
Well, a couple of other items, Commissioner Crowder. With the housing market, one of the difficulties that we see is providing housing. We're seeing a lot of, we're seeing a lot of RVs and trailers that are popping up on the sides of garages and other items that are popping up on vacant property, et cetera. And the building code, as well as the ordinance, allows a temporary structure up to 180 days. But we're not out there all the time tracking when they show up, when we need to send an enforcement officer out to tell them to move, et cetera. It's one that, to be quite honest, I've been cautious about exercising because of the housing crisis and some of the difficulties that's, but it's in the ordinance. And I've been cautious about how heavy-handed we are in the county regarding that. I've probably had eight, maybe nine calls about people, were you aware of this? Were you aware of this? Oh, there's this one that just came up. Do you know how many there are? There's gotta be 200, is the comments that I'm hearing from people when we have conversations. And what are you doing about it? Uh, yeah, I've got time to go patrol the entire county and look for every trailer violation that happens to be on property. So I'm just sharing that there is a growing need in the county, and it should be studied and addressed.
Are we doing an ordinance review?
Not until we finish the comprehensive plan rewrite and then start into the ordinance.
I think that ought to be a part of this conversation as well.
It's part.
Now, you're talking about, for instance, we have a housing crisis, and that's something to be concerned about. And so now you have, someone puts a trailer next to a garage, if this is in a rural area, is that something we really ought to be worried about?
Currently, yes, because it's in our ordinance.
Well, then that's why I say we need to take a look at these ordinances, I think, and see if, that has to be part of the conversation. Do these ordinances even make sense for the time we're letting it?
Correct. No, it's in our notes and it's on our radar, just an FYI. It's part of what we're tracking for.
Because I think what you say is right. We don't want to be heavy-handed and just, you know, anyway.
Well, we've also brought to Hal's attention, in our patrol division, when they find trailers that are parked, possibly in an easement, possibly on private property, possibly not on private property. And it's a matter of, okay, for us, if it's in an easement, what legal ground do we have to do anything about and tell this person to move, or is he on that hedge way of a private property? There's one out there by the sneaker station, the old sneaker station, and we brought to Hal's attention. And it's a matter of, okay, tell us if there's an ordinance, or do we need an ordinance to prevent a homeless encampment that starts? I mean, we, him and I have gone out there personally and talked to the guy to say, you need to move this, but it's pretty idle, you know, and we don't really carry any weight, because we don't really know, but we know it's gonna start attracting more and more. In fact, there was another one that moved in, and we actually intervened soon enough to, oh, yeah, I'll get this out of here tomorrow. And it was gone, but it was one of those, just the sheer contact. But this guy, he's been there months now.
Yeah. Well, on historical side, there by income, a year ago, you went and ran the guy off that was.
Well, heck, buy our share. So it's one of those things, right now.
Yeah, we had one in county.
The chief and I were just giving idle threats, and it's a matter of, okay, is there an ordinance in place? We don't know, but it's one of those things. Ordinance review, do we need an ordinance for certain situations? It'd be nice to add that, because, like I said, those things attract things that can cause problems.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear we're looking at doing an ordinance review. And it's not just for the reason that maybe we have ordinances that we really don't need. Maybe we have more ordinance we do need, because I certainly don't want to see a bunch of homeless encampments like the, where I moved from, so.
Right. And that's what we're trying to prevent. And I believe I'm working with Chief Shai, because when there's things I see in the city, I'll call the chief and says, hey, you've got.
If that part-time would potentially work, that would be a move in the right direction from our standpoint. So, thank you.
Thank you. And you'll be up in just a minute. Five minutes, you got it.
Christie Clausar, Controller. I have two items for the board. These were talked about briefly during budget. The first item is Valley Office Systems for Adult Probation, identifying funds to buy them a copier so that they're functioning appropriately in their office. The cost was $5,774. I'm asking if we can pay that either out of pilt or county operations?
What's your recommendation?
Pilt.
That's what I was gonna say. I'd just pay it out of pilt. It's a one-time deal. Get it done.
And what I can do is I'll provide a reallocation to include the enterprise leases. I'll provide that through resolution for the board to approve, and then we'll just also put this money and it's on mine as well, and we'll move it from the Joe Boyler project. The next item is for retirement payout for an unanticipated retirement and adult probation. We need to move $19,000 plus benefits so that that position can be replaced. I am, the only place we can do that is to move money out of contingency and put that money in their budget so that we can actually make the payout. If that's okay, then again, I'll do, work with them and get a resolution done to actually move that money out. And it would be, sorry, I did not do the math, it would be 19,000 plus 20%.
24.
$22,800.
Yeah, I mean, person just decides to retire, what are you gonna do?
And this late in the year, it's really tough to absorb it, which she thought she could do, but that would still put us over budget, and that is what she's gonna, actually that, I need to clarify with her, she said she would not replace that position until October 1, so that dollar amount is actually gonna be less. So I'll just provide that, like I said, through resolution, and that'll be your formal, that'll be the actual dollar amount. And I can have those ready for Tuesday.
Okay.
Can you? Okay. If not, we can do it the following Tuesday. There's really no rush on either of these. We've got, well, we've got the action to move. The retirement's not until a little bit later. So let's plan for the following Tuesday. That gives us both a little bit more time to put those together. Evy can get the actual copier ordered, but then we won't have to pay for it until after that anyways.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Let that happen.